Good afternoon, everyone. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First People's traditional land. We recognize this traditional territory to respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, I will call the meeting of the committee of the whole for June thirteenth to order at four oh one P M. And we will begin with the adoption of the agenda. Counsel, or pardon me, I'll start with administration. Administration, is there anything regarding the agenda that we should? Any concerns, anything like that?
To the chair, I'd like to add another close session item, item eight point four, titled legal contract discussion.
Thank you very much. So we'll identify eight point four as legal contract discussion. Counsel, any other additions or changes to the agenda? Counsel, it's also been brought to my attention that we are still waiting on Staff Sergeant Frigomany to be with us this afternoon. I would, if counsel is amenable, I would recommend approving the agenda as amended by our C A O, at which point if Staff Sergeant Frigomany is late and you're amenable to it, we can simply have her present with the understanding that things are probably a little complex for our community folks today. C A O, is that appropriate if you just give the Staff Sergeant the form which does?
Yes, I know.
Counsel, any amendments discussion? Counselor Taylor?
Do you want a motion to approve the agenda as needed?
Please.
I would like to put a motion to approve the agenda as.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much, counsel. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, then I, we'll wait until it appears digitally, but we will call that to question. And counsel, if you can vote electronically, no. And that is carried six to nothing. Thank you very much. And we will move on to citizens with counsel, and I understand that we have Mr. Woodley here with us today. Mr. Woodley?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the public communication. All right, it looks pretty good. I like the timelines they have in there. So I did submit, Jordan made it clear that that's the process I use for complaints. We're going forward. So I did submit one April eighteenth and another one April nineteenth. I haven't really heard anything back from those. It's been almost, I mean, short two months. But the other one I want to mention, boys, that for that letter that was sent to me from the town about the way I was treated as a result of the situation to improve our customers, this is from the Development Services. There is to improve our customer service in town, development and planning department, we'll be making future improvements of those. So one of the points was creating a process for handling place about development permits. And it issued, it said a clear complaint escalation process with designated points of contact. I see in the policy which I am using now to put in a complaint, they have no escalation process. Any way to follow up? So after, you know, thirty days, I assume you go to your director and ask him, because he's worked here before, and I imagine sometime after that, if nothing's been followed up to, what's the next step? So I've waited almost two months, but I knew now with the two minutes up again for a response.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Woodley. I appreciate that. All right. Let's see here. We, Jen, do we have anybody else digitally or wishing to speak with us with counsel?
No.
Okay. So seeing that, we will move on to delegations and presentations. But we will, no, okay, that's okay. Then counsel, we don't see a staff sergeant with us yet. So we will move on to reports from administration and we will begin with section five point one, Public Communications Policy, A D twelve oh four, the communications policy review, and we will turn it over to administration. But sorry, and then before we do so, because I don't want to interrupt in the middle of the presentation. It's four oh five, as I indicated by email to counsel and admin. I will be excusing myself at approximately four ten, and I will turn the meeting over to Counselor Statik, who will chair my absence, but I should be back within an hour, twenty minutes or so. Thank you.
To administration. Then the chair and I will turn that over to this ring.
Good evening, Kenny. So the corporate services department have undertaken a review of the public communication policy as directed by the council room. And the municipal communication strategy. The policy to happen today has been aligned with the strategic plan of redevelopment and community privacy, and it's centered around principles of the fact that we have made out our current communication policy. The draft provides policy as a touch through review, and I look forward to your feedback and any questions.
I'll just start with question one, related to what we just heard. Were there any staffs or ways to measure the success of how we've been doing on this so far? So for example, when I go check into a hotel in twenty-four hours, I get a survey form back that says, uh, that survey says, you know, how well did we do, that sort of thing. What have you got going for hint list? So you may have this successfully programmed, and we know that it's actually working before we spent in a policy.
For me, has statistics on usage of Hinton lessons over the last five years, statistics show that it consistently improved usage, especially in sunny, sunny two, when the communication service unit and the rest of the administration have really been boosted through Hinton lessons. So in fact, statistics on that. As for customer satisfaction with response through Hinton lessons, we don't have that kind of data, but something we could include in the upcoming citizens satisfaction survey.
Follow up if I could, sure. Well, timeliness, so whatever our standards are right now, we know that within X period of time, we at least get back to responding to say that we got your complaint. And we know how long it takes us to respond to a complaint. We have any information on that?
So we don't, we don't have specific parameters that is set out now, which is included in the policy. We generally get back to people within one to three days, and they have the information they requested within seventeen days. Those timelines were increased in the policy here, just to give us a or if there's a long weekend, it might take us longer to acknowledge a submission because, you know, because we've been out of the office or and the thirty day timeline we included in there is in time with point timelines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that note, any insight on other policies similar to this, that they would have a preliminary response date? What I'm alluding to is like thirty days to get a first response back is, is not, you know, great from a a resident perspective. So could we implement something where a first response that we're looking into in the rubber is minimum forty-eight hours, as an example? And then you gives it down the ladder to be based on the complexity of the question, it give, you know, a final answer. Any, any comment on if it's in the policy that I overlooked, or how do we address that?
So that is the intent of what's laid out in point three four four. That we make every reasonable effort to acknowledge each submission within five calendar days we receive. If it's a simple request, that would be answered within the first five days. But within those first five days is when someone will get a response that says, thank you for your submission. We are forwarding this to the appropriate staff members, and we'll get back to you as soon as possible. And the thirty days is when they would have the consequences of that to that question.
Follow up. Thanks for, for that. Is, is is forty-eight or seventy-two hours from an administrative perspective on, on our past history more reasonable to get a first answer? And that's what I'm trying to engage. I want to find the flexibility and what makes sense as an organization, but also get a response back, and some are more timely than others, and, you know, budgets seems to be
So we won't wait five days because we know if there's a long weekend and someone submits her a first four fifteen on a Friday, and then they don't get a response until Tuesday, they might be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. But five calendar days, whereas we, you know, would not have leave that in the office until that Tuesday to extend that acknowledgement. This, the, all submissions are replied to manually. We don't have a, you know, we don't have an automated system that sends things back. Every submission is sent to you, and we will review them.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. So here's my question. I know my job as a counselor, when someone calls me and has a question, I give them the how to find Hinton lessons and follow up where they should access their answer. How do I get that answer? So, and that's always been that you can, I have these people that voted against listens, they get the answer, and I don't have it. Like another person calling with the same question, if I would have got that answer also, I could just provide the answer, not a person even up here. So that's something that's on our horizon where, you know, counsel, you know, could do the controls.
I mean, if it's something that administration can answer, we would like for people to just come directly to us with the question, and we feel like more we promote Hinton lessons and like also help promote Hinton lessons as well. People will be able to come directly to ask through Hinton lessons as that one source, that one channel, where they will get a consistent response from administration.
Right, but how do I still, how do I get the answer? Just email you?
Chair, you know, we we'd like to keep, you know, counsel as informed as we possibly can to be able to add off a lot of requests and have those answered, so it doesn't have to go through the chain or administration where we can. But you know, if there are questions that you, you want to know when you're getting those questions on, you can always come to us to see it all, ensure that I can inform all of counsel to, to be informed of the matter. I, I, I wouldn't want counsel having, because you would get a lot of emails with a lot of responses if that was the case. So if there's anything specific that you need, always come to, to me or member of staff to ensure that counsel needs to be informed on this subject, we're getting questions. Can you provide that to counsel?
And I do have to say, I know Hinton lessons works. I used it, and I got my answer very quickly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray, or Counselor Ray, Counselor Ray. Thank you. So I guess internal reporting, is there somebody who's ultimately responsible for listens? We've heard that there are instances where within those timeframes? I mean, does that go into a, I don't know, a special where we can be able to save an hour? Or how, how is that done? I mean, how can you have a request?
So at the moment, all Hinton lessons inquiries come through at the info@hinton.com email address, which is sent to the communications coordinator, the under two five. We, we hope that all this with this policy and having these specific parameters in place, that's going to give us the opportunity to kind of tighten up that system, and really help keep track of things like that, so that requests don't go, don't go longer than this timeframe.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Counselor Ray.
Going back to Mayor Michael's comments. I don't mind the timeframes if they're appropriate. I'd like to tighten up. That doesn't mean that if you don't miss the timeframe, you can't go back to a person, say this is a more complex case thing, and we need a little bit more time. I don't find that. But to go to the lowest possible bar, you know, like I jumped in, and the bar sets, well, you can jump backwards at night, like that approach. And, and the one day thing. There are a lot of businesses that automatically give some sort of response that says, we got your thing, we got it all. So I, I like this tightened up to a one, a one working day response that you sent us an email by data response or eight percent of these queries. But if you can't meet that, that timeframe, at least get back to a person, say it's a more complex case, then we're going to take a little bit longer. That's my purpose, not to just go thirty days for everything to catch everything. And in relation to the other question that Brian O'Marge made, accountability is something I was thinking about. Wouldn't it be more accountable if this, not to have this filtered through communications? But to just on your, our website, have it explaining the crew answers to type of question in the topic areas to have people go directly to those directors. Then we don't have a filter, the question goes directly to the departments that are in charge. Does that add more accountability, possibly timeliness of requests? What, what, why, why wasn't that?
So the, the concept of Hinton lessons is kind of the opposite of that. That it's, Hinton lessons is a one stop for, for our citizens to be able to find information, request the service. It, it eliminates the need for citizens to go searching for a website to try and find the right person they want to talk to about it, about their inquiry. Quite often, inquiries will be part of an answer from different people in different departments. And so rather than, rather than a citizen's email being passed through a few different people that are getting half answers, we collect all of the information within communications, and we send that one message to go back, to go back to the citizen.
Good answer.
Thank you.
You can say, you're right, Mr. Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm comfortable making a direction. We'll see where the little council goes. I'd like to give direction to amend section four point three point four B to include within two business days. And I think the intent is, I understand the long weekends, but I think at the very least, an approach to responding within forty-eight hours that we're hoping to be is fair. I'm, I'm open to different numbers. I think that's a minimal starting point for me that we should be acknowledging it because the rationale is if there's no response or acknowledgement within forty-eight hours, they, they come to the council and mayor. We get a lot of questions, and to me, it's just the acknowledging part. So I'll begin with that. I think there's other things I'd like to perhaps weaken this, but that to me, but at least I'll be the eight, the five calendar days, but also is exposed to during the week, which a lot of business days too, and then we can pull back on that. I don't know what to do, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Michael, so anyway, we have a direction request for, so keep comments, some questions, and stream for that for the time being. So.
So through the chair to the members of council, the straightened, jumped in if I'm wrong, but I think what would probably be most important, I know this, I think when you send it, you at least want to know that it's been received. Somebody, you know, it's, it's within the queue, but I, I think that the most further way to do that, what within forty-eight hours, just automatic response saying, you know, we've received your request, you know, we will be sending it out to the appropriate parties, please wait next month or days, we intend in response. But it would be I think an automatic response, because even when staff are in the office, we can't always get to something within two days, just with everything else going on. Typically, we can, but it's a good catch-all to make sure that everybody knows that we've received it, it will be the best.
So if I may, the other things I was talking about were kind of pertaining to that. I would like an automatic response, which is minutes after the email or second after the email. I guess what I'm, I'm going to use, the first phase of interacting with the municipality is, is after the auto response is, is to me two business days. That means that a staff sees the response after they've given the, the automated response and said, we have staff looking into this. Due to the complexity, this might take five days. That's the first interaction. So from, from a customer service standpoint, automatic reply, I'm good at that. So that's immediate, good. Resolution date of thirty days and the interaction date of five days is what I'm trying to fix. So if, if we can put something in that we get automatic responses, awesome, but I'd like to change my motion then to say that the first interaction with the, with, with the request is, is still two business days, and that to me is the best thing for us. I mean, automatic response, forty-eight hours of business hours to get a detail on a, a timeline based on you need to ask, then a limit on when we look to close. So whatever advice administration may have to change the motion in order to reflect that, that is my intent.
Administration to.
Yeah, to that, sir. Through the chair, you know, it's. I, I understand the rationale. The only, the one thing is that everyone will be getting three emails for every simple request that they, that they do those. You know, I think that there were several comfort, at least from me, on lowering that thirty day threshold to say, you know, this is the timeline that we commence, you know, we make every reasonable effort to commit within this timeline. And then at least we have an end date, so they know that they can wait, you know, we always make every effort to respond to these as soon as we can, because we don't want these lingering building up, but yeah. You know, if it's two calendar, two business days makes a difference, but even on business days, right, we have stat day, holiday stat day, so it's just a unique circumstance, it can be difficult, and we get a lot of requests. It's a, you know, it is a big job making sure that all of these are responded to in an orderly fashion. This there is some difficulties behind it. It's not like a normal, you know, let's say a retail business where you're only getting a a low amount of them, you know, in some cases, we do receive a lot of these requests, but you know, I would, at least my comfort would be an automatic response, and then maybe a quicker turnaround. But we can certainly send, it's just the fact that it'd be, it'd be announced for every request.
Okay. I will approach this from a more linear perspective and withdraw this direction if that's okay with counsel and deal firstly with the automation part. I'd like for the policy to include an automatic response. That's going to be an approach that counsel supports, then I'll, I'll look to do automation. I'll look to, to then reintroduce my first interaction, and then look at changing the thirty days. That's my, so for the sake of simplicity, I'd like to remove or withdraw my direction at this time and go forward in that direction, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for Michael's, Michael's move to withdraw his direction request. The council's any discussion on that committee, sorry. Seeing none, all is bigger.
I'm going to sit here and then pick the exact times of the, of what we're doing, since we can take like word of minutes into that. Well, you just have to give administration a direction to tighten up the timeframe, so it'll come back to us such that such that the timeframe, you can't take up to thirty days, but generally the idea is that eighty percent would be done and the low line, the low line, true, would be plucked within five days. You have to get back to somebody, it's that five, I think, where you would, where you would where you would get back, and say this is going to take longer, this is going to take up to thirty days because you got compliments from the question, rather than us have to fine tune it to that degree. I suggest a motion that would say we ask administration to look at tightening up some of the, the timeframes of perhaps automating without us getting too specific. So my motion would be exactly that, I guess, for help with the wording.
Through the chair, if I could. As a way, because as a way to do this, possibly getting the automatic response saying, you know, we intend to, we will get back to you within, say, five business days. If we don't, we will let you know that it's going to take a little bit longer. It's kind of, you know, because most of these requests, quite honestly, we can respond to them in a day or two. No problem. So I think that would be reasonable to say, you know, we will get back to you within five days. And if we don't have the answer, we will get back to you. It's just going to say it's going to take a little longer, but I think those are going to cover off probably ninety percent of all of the requests that we receive, that at least people know it's a short enough time, short enough timeline, and it's still aligned, and then we can, you know, for those more complex matters, at least we'll just get back to them, but it'll take a little bit longer.
My, my motion would be that we ask administration to look at tightening up the, the timeframes in four, three, four, B, and four, three, four, C. Come back with recommendations.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Maybe we have a question table.
Mr. Michael's. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although I'd like to intend, I, I won't support that. I'd like for us to give administration the recommendations today as a committee, otherwise the next time it comes back to committee, we're just running in a circle again. I know where I stand after hearing the, the, the conversation, the answers from the administration. I'm flexible on the interaction date. To me, three criteria are extremely important in the customer service interaction with the resident. One is the acknowledgement. I want automatic, an automated messaging for the acknowledgement. Two, the first interaction of administration should be seventy-two hours, three business days, to not get a response at all, even though a large majority are a day or so, there will be answered within the seventy-two hours. To me, as an organization, if we need extra resources for seventy-two hours to get a response on what the timeline will be to define the issue, to me is extremely fair. People know three business days, somebody, a human being from the town of Hinton will at least acknowledge and say, this is the components, we'll get back to you. That to me is extremely fair. And the last one, we strive to complete the the, the response more than fifteen days. So you get automated, automated response seventy-two hours for someone from the town to apply back in fifteen days of closing. Those would be my parties. If there are financial implications, please let me know what they are. So that's why I'm going to support administration to come back. After hearing everything, I think we as a committee can establish that those parameters are.
You know, Mayor Michael's counsel.
Yeah, I was thinking everything, I, I tend to agree. I would, I guess. And those are, I had written down two business days. I support three, like fifteen days, turns out it's a reasonable timeframe. And I do think, I mean, at the end of the day, we're in the customer service, should be. And I think to get a a person that actually respond, everybody gets automatic emails that name not getting a good response. So I think they have a person who's ready within three business days.
Do you, Counselor Bearish? Any, anything further? So, so there.
Only the motion there. I, I think what I heard from Jordan was definitely reasonable, but responding in one day, response within five days that can provide the answer to the question for most of the people. If you don't get your answer, it's going to say that you're, I believe that's the response, right? Yeah. So I think that's kind of the reason. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Any? See nothing further. We can see the direction request. There's a direction request that any direct administration on.
Uh is a direction request that committee direct administration on to tighten up the timeframe to respond. You know, getting communication policy eighty twelve or four. Also, do you want to specify subscriptions in in the where it was?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor. Many, you've been earlier before your question. See, no, and all those is bigger.
Yeah.
And is defeated with uh counselor Taylor's work and remaining yes. Right, also, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to seek uh for good direction that. Policy AD ten twenty-four reflects. An acknowledgement that is auto-generated. A first. Interaction. From a talented Hinton employee. Could be seventy-two hours. Business hours.
Mayor Michaels. You go back this morning, I just started over again.
Uh that is, give direction that uh. Policy AD ten twenty-four reflects. Acknowledged uh acknowledgements. To be auto-generated. That the first interaction. With a town, a Hinton employee. The seventy-two business hours. In that a targeted completion, be no more than five days. And if I'm going to listen to that, Mr. Chair, uh again, I'm open. Originally, I like forty-eight hours is. I I feel, I understand there are some matters, I I won't dive uh on that hill, but I think this time is up. Um something that's extremely important to our community. People wanna be heard and honestly, they go to council. This is not. We need to hint in. If they don't get a response from staff or uh administration, they go, they go to council. And uh uh I am happy to look at the logistics, the financials of it, but to me, this is actually one of the most important interactions between. Our uh uh our. Our organization and uh our voters, not residents, so I'd like to spend extra time on getting this right. Uh I believe this uh direction, I think reflects the intent of uh not just myself, hopefully many counselors and. Uh this will uh increase the communication and satisfactory customer service for residents and thank you.
Thank you, your Michael's. Um and ask for any development, that's okay. That'd be three business days, seven, could, is there someone's job? My apologies, yes. Hey, uh we have a direction request on four, Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, a question for Mayor Michael's MCO. Is this for what I would consider to be a first order request? When I say first order request, I mean somebody who hasn't uh already gone to uh. Uh like me, there's a first order request, there's a second order request, first order request, you'd be somebody who's asking the question for the first time. Versus somebody who's already gone with administration. Now that's the question, second part. And then want to come to house them. Uh this doesn't apply to the second order. Already tried to go to that administration, get an answer. Uh sir, and it goes. Uh this doesn't apply to that. This applies to what I call a first order request, probably ninety-five percent of somebody who's just asking a question first time.
The wrinkles.
Is that a correct assumption?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. The intent for me is. Definitely first, uh first request, second request is a bit of a gray area because there is already interaction between the residents where they. Uh the the question in administration and they follow up to me with whoever they've been dealing with, but if they have to start over, it's not exclusive. They. They could use this again, but it doesn't dismiss the fact that they can also follow up with administration. So I have none. I hand this over to CEO and asking to add, and my intent would refer first, but it's not totally. Not not exclusive to self all the pulse, but.
No, that's the answer I expected. I'm hoping for that there are like separate request timeframes in the document that you best lead this document. The second question would be to see uh, when that will be. So obviously, if you're gonna get back to somebody at day number three. You're probably not gonna get back, because you automated the response. You're probably gonna get back to them day number three and say. To the low hanging fruit, here's the answer to the question. That's probably the response that's gonna happen at the time. I I would suspect that for most of the time, depending on the complexity, it can be answered with deciding which other requests will be answered within three days. That's basically the implication of what's up there, so I'm okay with that.
To give to Councilor Taylor, to answer Reese.
Thank you, sir. So um I will support this motion a hundred percent. I feel the people want to be acknowledged, but I actually hear people saying, you go up. It's definitely a process in, I know response right now, one day two, I was hours, taught me someone. And they kept me in the loop.
The race, uh I have myself next. I support the direction request to took for me. This, whether it's three business days, five business days, two business days, doesn't matter so much as the point of the automated response. The biggest complaint that I've heard from citizens about listens is when they when they submit their complaint. They don't hear anything back, so they don't know if it was received. They don't know if they're supposed to wait week, month, a year. They don't know any of that. So if they get an automated response that says you will be. Responded to by a town employee within three business days. That I think is the biggest part for me, because then they have a deadline. They can say, okay, three days has passed, I haven't heard anything back. I'm gonna get back to them again. So if that's for that reason, I will support this. Thank you. Maybe, anything further before we call the question? Maybe, seeing. Let me see, nothing from committee. We can see the direction request is. The committee direct administration, the policy AD one two zero four reflect acknowledgement to be auto-generated. And that the first interaction with the town employee. Town Hinton employee, the three business days that a targeted completion will be no more than fifteen days. Kenny, we could go. Next, Gary. This uh, Councilor McGee's back, this is.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Satchick, Counselor Taylor.
Um, no, that's excellent, um. My other concern with this document is there's no provision for what I call and just defined as a second word, the second order uh. Uh inquiry. I just define a second order inquiry as somebody who's already gone to the town and then goes to a council. So this document here, this communication policy is. That's what this says. But that's you provision for people who have gone to the town. That uh then uh need extra help, can go to a counselor. And I think that's be in the stock in someone else. I look forward to any comments made on that, otherwise, otherwise.
It was a better, my apologies.
No worries. Oh, uh counsel, counsel race.
Thank you, sir. So um, Counselor Taylor, are you saying they did not get a satisfactory answer from administration? So we're coming to this conference, or they did not get an answer?
You got no answer?
Just answer.
It could be a right, yes. It could be a clean, clean answer. It could be uh they missed the timeframe. It could be. It could be uh anything.
So the answer that they did get did not satisfy them, so they need.
Counselors, if we can go through the chair, I I saw, I just don't wanted to get. Uh but please, please clarify, Counselor Taylor, at this point.
Yeah, I think the, I think uh we're elected officials, we have to trust the council to use its judgment. I mean, they just gave an answer that they uh they just don't like. Yeah, they got a correct answer, then they have, we have to have some judgment to be able to say that, no, I'm sorry, street, but a really good uh. Good uh, good answer there, but if there's some basis for the council to be agreed on this basis with the counselor. A second order request in some circumstances may be appropriate.
Thank you.
Does it answer your question, Counselor? Perfect, thank you, Counselor Race. Over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question to administration is, you guys. Wrote this up, so I wanna see your perspective, because I I would be in support of some verbiage that would. Uh amend itself to. Potentially amend four point one point four, which re-elected and appointed members should redirect. Initial public inquiries to be submitted through Hinton listens. And I guess my question to administration is um. Uh is that something you would recommend, or how would you want to approach if we want to um? Have a deal with follow-ups that have already been, who have been listens that have not been directed by at least some of the residents' perspective? Please.
Um sometimes when we get requests, we will respond and as part of that response, we will invite citizens to speak during with the council.
Mr. Mayor, does that answer your question?
Uh yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Um I'll sit for a moment and see if there's other counselors who wanna speak, but I think my intent is to add the word initial. Uh and it uses the word should, uh which doesn't mean is a must, uh and and sometimes things that are too rigid or or. Bring negative, so uh I'll see where the rest of council is before uh I get direction, but thank you.
And myself and Counselor Taylor, uh just in short, understanding it's not on the table yet, I would support that. Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, me too. And and another example may be that they might have gotten a response back that say a incomplete kind of response, not a sort of broad thinking response. That's not really sound, I support your uh motion.
Just, oh, sorry, Counselor O'Satchick.
No.
I'm gonna make full comment until somebody makes.
Counselor Taylor.
I don't think we make more. I like to make a motion that be uh. We do uh. Uh. It's that four point one one point four that we insert word uh. Initial uh. Eleven and twenty officials should redirect initial public inquiries. To be submitted, so I think there's a uh, no, not the suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, Counselor Satchick.
Yeah, I I do have a question then. If they've received the initial response. And then they want to go to a council member, council's or. What's the intent? What 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 would counsel do to help? Make the process of giving the citizen the information of seeking more official, what would be, what's the role, Kelly? Mr. Mayor? Thank you, sir. From my perspective, it's uh, again, I I I don't want this to be too rigid, but the the intent is. Initial public inquiry went through uh Hinton listens, there seems to be an unsatisfactory answer and then. Um in order to. Get the CAO's uh at least advice to the counselors who's dealing with this resident um. A a better perspective on what's for us to communicate, because we are still, you know, uh I did, to me, our role as a counselor is to still communicate with residents, so. That is a natural step that's going to happen. I'd like to outline. The first step, we want to avoid people just coming to us for the first step. The second step is a little discretionary. And allows us to then follow up on something that might be more complicated, get the CAO's advice to then deal or or uh. Uh delegate that to a director or a manager to deal with that person uh in order to clarify. It's not a perfect science, but that is the one issue I'm trying to, uh at least in supporting this to alleviate, which is. The second one as well, still not taking away our right as counselors to hear uh residents' concerns, so uh that's my intent for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll I'll speak too. I think honestly, without. Without intending to, this has sort of been my, my own informal process. I've been trying to direct citizens to listen first. Uh at which point, you know, my guidance is always, listen, if you don't hear back or if something happens that you're, you know. You just don't get communication, because we understand how things can hit up at times. I always say, come back and let me know. So that I can try and facilitate an answer through administration. Uh and it's, I don't know, it's worked for me pretty good so far. Counselor Race and Counselor O'Satchick.
Thank you, sir. To have been, are the answers always via email? Or are they ever fixed to base?
Most of the time it would be email. Uh we occasionally get calls. Uh if we get a call from a citizen, we will log it into. Into the same victim, uh that will be enough with the call back, but I would say ninety-nine percent of the. Requests for sensitive information come via mail.
Uh would you be opposed to have any face-to-face communication? Because example, a lot works better than. You know, reading it, they may not get a follow-up. And that's where I think. You know, they they may not have guard on the first interaction, but to do that, depending on. You know, and then initiating things to things. So.
Administration, please.
Yeah, sure, but Hinton listens isn't meant to be a really rigid process where we have to do it this way. It's just a way, it's really a tool of managing. The amount of requests and trying to ease the burden a little bit, uh you know, making sure that we can. Do it as orderly as we can, but you know, not everybody is going to use Hinton listens. Uh some people are. You know, maybe they just don't want to, or maybe they don't have the phone. Doesn't mean that their. Question or complaint or input is any less valuable, so always. You know, we'll always be flexible, and if someone does require a meeting or somebody does want to to meet face-to-face with discussing or this complicated matter, we'll be. We'll be flexible, but uh. Uh then also, my other comments just in support of what the mayor said, I think that's the best way to do it, you know, council. Is and I think always has to be the conduit to the community to make sure that these kinds of things are dealt with, so. You know, like you said, it's not a perfect science. I don't know if there is any perfect process, but. And that is our preference to try to direct as much as we can to that process to make sure that we can do it as orderly as we can. Uh council still the conduit to the community, uh and if there isn't satisfaction coming out from. The initial response coming to me, we can make sure that we address that.
Thank you, CAO, uh Counselor O'Satchick and Counselor Lavarge.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think Michael's through the explanation on. On how he would envision this work. Yeah, I'm understanding that. I I support that then, if this is, if you know, the response that a citizen gets. Causes them to feel that maybe there's a policy change needed or a law change needed, that definitely would be something that should come to uh. To council and and having that avenue, this is secondary. A secondary contact, I think, is. Favorable than making extensive amendments to this. Policy to be able to have. A secondary inquiry process that I don't wanna see another whole secondary process put into this. Having the avenue open to contact counselors and discuss their concerns with them so that the council could. Potentially uh draw the CAO into the conversation. potentially, uh, draw the C O into the conversation to give initial clarity, or if there's a legislative, uh, actual needs to be taken. It could be a, a good way to go, and thank you for that. That'd be smart, Peter, was then.
Thank you, Counselor O'Satchett. Counselor LaVarge?
Uh, C O, can I ask you a question? Thanks. I'll be in support of that.
All right, thank you, Counselor Taylor.
This amendment would also take care of the, uh, concern Mr. Willie brought up about escalation to, because it still leaves the ball, so I think that's
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, I have no other speakers on the list. Uh, any other conversation or questions prior to calling the, uh, direction of question? Seeing none, uh, Jen, if we could call the question, please, I'll just get it up electronically, reread it, uh, and then we'll call it a question. So, committee, we will call the question that committee direct administration to add section, uh, to add to section four point one point four, to insert the word initial. Uh, but if I could just clarify, it was supposed to be, uh, redirect initial public inquiries. And I will just get the, uh, Counselor Taylor, I believe that was.
You know, your initial should be in front of the word public.
Perfect. Perfect. All right, Counselor Taylor, can you just, uh, clarify if up on the screen that reflects your motion?
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Then we will just. Jen, what advantage?
All right. Should I finish the rest?
No, I think as long as we understand where the placement is, that's, that's all that matters. And then Jen, I just see the original version on our screen digitally. Should we close that out? Okay. Not yet, no. There we go, excellent. Counsel, we'll call that your question, that committee direct administration to add section four point one point four to insert the word initial, redirect initial public inquiries. If you can, please vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Council, Administration. Council, anything further? Well, sorry, Counselor LaVarge.
Uh, it's a small thing, but it was moved by, uh, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Counselor LaVarge.
Thank you very much, Counselor LaVarge. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's nothing further. Uh, I'd like to move that committee direct administration to bring the draft public communication policy eighty twelve oh four to a future meeting of council as amended.
It's duly put, but I do see, and so I'll just go, Counselor Taylor?
For me?
Oh.
Um, yeah, I, I just kind of wonder, yes, uh, members are expected to make, communicate with the public as per House voter conduct section four one three.
Sorry, Counselor Taylor, uh, unfortunately, uh, the mayor's, uh, motion did hit the floor. So before we go back, we will just need, uh, consensus of council to remove that.
I'll withdraw.
I do believe it still has to be voted on, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so we have a, a motion to withdraw, uh, the mayor's, uh, previous motion, Jen, for the council, uh, there is a request to withdraw the mayor's motion, which was the recommended action to bring it to a regular, uh, committee or a regular council meeting. This one, if we could just, uh, check this by hand, all those in favor to withdraw? And that is approved. Counselor Taylor, sorry, if you can continue, please.
Um, yeah, these aren't, uh, for shattering, uh, concerns, but, uh, uh, section four one one, and section four one three, neither lack consistency, neither the quote of conduct, nor the quote of conduct, has redundancies in precision, which make for problems when using it as a precise standard, as indicated in, uh, section four one three. Uh, so it's not necessarily just the mayor, the primary spokesmen, the provision, and the court of conduct, but it's either the mayor or it gets, uh, the person designated by council. So that's, uh, concerning there. And the impercision comes from the quote of conduct, and that, and it talks about communicating with the public, and the quote of conduct talks about the well, so. And I don't, I don't know where the definition of that is. We're supposed to communicate the will of council. Vision definition for that is an imprecise term that is subject to interpretation. Do you want possibly define what that term is, so that the standard is clear, or leave out a reference to, uh, the quote of conduct? Uh, through the chair to a civic committee, so the will of council is the decisions that council has made, uh, being fifty percent plus one of council is the will of council. Absolutely, that's what I mean. Uh, I am not sure if that is, well, I said, it's a lot of seventy, so as long as we're, uh, as long as we're ready, uh, the decisions of council, okay. Because the quote of conduct refers to the well of council, refers to decisions of council, so there's, uh, there is inconsistency in how those terminology for use, so it's a couple of council that, that different meaning than others where. Uh, through the chair, not, not to my, not to my knowledge, I hope that we, you know, will, the decision of council are going to be one of the same, just because, you know, council can, the act, we didn't properly form, and that's eventually where the other council had to do anything, so. I think if you were to add on or speak upon the bill of council, you know, the, uh, but to me, that would be representing what council, uh, has done for, uh, someone who could uh, communicate on behalf of the house, uh, to, you know, that would be accepted, but I'd really come to it. That's fine, nothing further.
Thank you. Counselors, anything else before we look for a motion to? Counselor Taylor?
Another higher point, if you don't mind. Little folks who want a computer, so they have a way to get, uh, through on Hinton Listens, it's just a phone call. They don't, don't have user in here. Uh, through the chair, so, um, I'll, for this one, it's very.
So, um, all of the professionals in our building, uh, both the, the entire from the public, uh, they can be directed to the communications service unit. And, uh, that Hinton Listens submission is entered into that Hinton Listens system. Whether that's the, if it comes to a bell day, we can talk to them, or, uh.
Counselor Taylor?
I, this, I just said one more question, Counsel, if I could, please, I don't know what you're, you know, on this one, yes, but we've talked about it, uh. Do you want to measure, do you want to have a way in here to measure how well this thing is working for us? Or are we going to measure that based on complaints or concerns? Like, are we going to have stats, like the business, or are we going to do customer service on this one? Is this something that we want? Often, you know, you got, uh, Counselor O'Satchett?
Yeah, I have a question for administration, that's what you needed to, uh, it's about trackability, is, can, like, say, concerns or anything, to Hinton Listens? Is there a mechanism that's letting people place to track how those submissions are dealt with, what happens with them, so that there is accountability?
So, uh, through the chair to the rest of the committee, yes, the intent is that we can codify a process which includes those measurements, so we can make sure that there is a system and, uh, uh, just ensuring that it's a little bit more qualified versus just emails going back and forth, and you can track it, we can be specific in what we need, and we can make sure that would hit the targets.
Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
Um, so next, so six months now, we have a discussion about this, we can talk about the timeliness of responses, and we'll be, information on that. It's all even so, excellent, thank you.
Counsel, uh, any further questions before looking for a motion to bring it back to regular? Council meeting. Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, did you want to bring forward that?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'd like to, uh, move that committee direct administration to bring the draft public policy, uh, communication policy eighty twelve oh four to a future meeting of council as amended.
Thank you. Thank you very much, council. Uh, while Jen's putting that together digitally, do we have any discussion on this? Any questions? Seeing none? And Jen, as soon as it's available digitally, if you wouldn't mind, uh, putting it up for us, and then I will call to question. Counsel, does anybody have it yet?
No, I, you know, I don't show anybody logged in, so if you want to just do, uh, manually.
Okay, uh, Counsel, that we will call this, uh, to question manually, that committee direct administration to bring back, uh, draft public communications policy eighty twelve oh four to a future meeting of council as amended. And it is up on the screen. Counsel, all those in favor, please indicate. And any opposed? Seeing none, that is carried unanimously. Counsel, do we have anything else on, uh, section five point one, uh, prior to moving on? Seeing none, my assumption is, uh, we have Staff Sergeant Freddie Manning with us, uh, now, are we prepared to be moving to that presentation? Staff Sergeant, thank you, your patience.
Thank you for having me.
You bet, uh, we'll move over to delegations and presentations four point one.
Thank you. Uh, so I've given a presentation here for the year end report, so the year end for the R C P is, I'll tell April, so and it says two thousand twenty-two, so it's April three thousand twenty-two, April twenty twenty-three, so we're two months into our new fiscal year, so just kind of keep that in mind. So this is the report in regards to the previous A P P and end of the year, so we'll look over a few things such as resources and staffing levels at the detachment, prime stats for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the previous A P P and the priorities, as well as the budget and the new A P P, which is our annual performance report, and then questions at the end. So staffing levels here at the detachment, uh, so at this time, uh, the town is funding seventeen regular positions, and that was as of February twenty twenty-three, which changed from the nineteen positions, so we have one staff sergeant, myself, one sergeant, officer C O, three corporals, which are the watch commanders, and we have twelve constables. Plus, we have three members who are funded by the rule in Israel, or through the rule. The vacancies currently, so we're moving from the nineteen F T E to seventeen, and we're currently at eighteen. So by the end of the summer, we have a number of transfers, uh, on the go, so that's where we'll get that number. So we currently have one position away, and that would be on the, on the, for, for, staffing levels in regards to support staff at the detachment. We currently have three town and two P S As, which are public servants, and we'll be moving to a two towns, two public servants, uh, into July, I believe, and we have currently no vacancies. Calls for service of two thousand twenty-two, so based on our pros data, which is our police, uh, reporting operations, uh, hidden detachment generated four thousand sixty-four files between January and December of twenty twenty-two. So that includes calls for service from the public, as well as self-generated and proactive files, so there was an increase of four point seven percent in calls from twenty twenty-two compared to twenty twenty-one. That could be for a number of different reasons, including, uh, violation tickets generate a call for service every time, uh, a ticket is generated. So calls for service, you'll see the different years, uh, obviously we're higher than twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, but, uh, basically on par with twenty nineteen. The municipality detachment goes by month. Uh, I put this on here because you can see that the summer months obviously are a little bit busy with the influx of people in town, and the winter months are a little bit quieter for, uh, calls for service.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So pros call is our police, uh, reporting, uh, current system, so anytime a file's created is basically our files. That's how that works. So it's just, I guess, the name that we give our system. Calls for service, so O C C versus front counters, there was two thousand one hundred fourteen self-generated front counter and proactive files, which means that nobody called in, you don't have a component on those files, so that generated fifty-two percent of all files. There was roughly one thousand nine hundred fifty calls for service that came through O C C, which is our operating system in Edmonton. Saturday had the most calls for service, while Thursday had the least. Top ten by workload, so this basically means the files that take the most amount of time per member, so we have the mental health act is being the most uh, time-consuming, and that would be because many of them we have to drive to Edmonton, because this is not a designated facility here at our hospital. And then from there, the, the files, um, as to what takes us the most amount of time to attend the O M and then leave. The municipality detachment top ten files by count, so mostly it's our non-moving traffic violations, uh, mischief, suspicious persons, well-being checks, and mental health. We deal a lot with mental health, so sometimes suspicious people, well-being checks, and mental health are all in the same category. Priority one and priority two response time, so our calls are divided into four different priorities, priority one being the, the highest priority we have, and those calls take us five to ten, uh, five to ten minutes from the time we receive them to the time we get there, and that's forty-three percent of our calls. Uh, we are arrive on scene five to ten minutes, and ten to fifteen minutes, uh, for thirty-five percent. So, uh, response time is, is quite a lot.
Sorry, uh, Staff Sergeant, Counselor Taylor?
What's priority one versus a priority two?
Priority one, uh, I don't have the exact definition, but it would be previous bodily harm, somebody is in serious need of the police, it's the, the top one, lights and sirens. Uh, priority two means something's in progress, but, uh, it's not a huge emergency that we need to get better, uh, record speed. Priority four are lost wallets, lost license plates, so it's kind of in between those two. So the A P P, I just refer to it, it's easier to call it that, it's the annual performance report from the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that actually should say twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So it was, uh, reduced collisions by five percent, decreased property crime, and maintained community relations. And this is how we did on our A P P, so our goal is to reduce it by five percent. Um, I was not the creator of this A P P, which caused me a little bit of grief, because it included all collisions, um, some are property collisions, as though somebody hit a sign, so if you get a post, they're probably not going to decrease those. So with the new one, I've taken out property-related, and I've just gone with injury collisions and focused on reducing those. So going back to the previous one, so we had three hundred eighty-seven collisions in two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, and there was actually an increase. Uh, it was an increase from three hundred and thirty-two, so the five percent decrease didn't work, but that could be for a number of different reasons. Uh, so the new A P P will focus just directly on injury and fatal collisions. So we looked at reducing property theft, and our goal was to decrease property theft by five percent. Now, when actuality, it, it increased by six percent, but in perspective, proactive leasing creates files. So the more proactive leasing we do, and we're out on the streets collecting stolen, stolen information, stolen uh, theft-related files, we increase files every time we do that. So we also created a crew mandate last year, which increased files, which is our crime reduction unit. We increased, uh, condition checks and hotspot controls, which then increased our file. So, uh, sorry, if anybody has any questions about that, it was a little bit difficult to put that into perspective, as the more proactive. Because the more proactive work we do, the more recruiting calls, which makes it increase fire numbers. So with our G I S unit, it had two constables and one corporal last year. It has now been decreased to one constable and one corporal. That is where the reduction of the members came from for the new year. So we recently moved it into a crime reduction unit mandate, which is basically crime of the week is our focus. It monitors files for current crime trends. We do warrant roundups and search warrants, reaching monitor, uh, and monitoring prolific offenders and working with partner agencies such as Alert Scan and Bylaw. Alert being, um, tire and drug dealing, scan being provincial. Uh, unit of Edmonton that deals with drug houses and then Bylaw with the town. So this is our new A P P. This will be our focus this year. I'm sorry, this is the results from last year. Let's skip ahead. So coffee with the cop was every quarter. Uh, yellowhead proactive activities. We did three hundred and twenty controls in the yellowhead. We attended community events. Hundred and forty-one this year, and we had over sixty visible, uh, foot patrols in town. Last year, we did a number of courses. We have a member on earth training currently. He should be done at the end of June. We did radar, radar and laser courses for speed, uh, enforcement. I C S one hundred, which is, we're able to work. More in a more positive way than our department, who also uses I C S. We have D R E training. We now have a certified drug recognition expert in the detachment. We've done domestic violence training, human sources, which is information received from the community. And firearms training and firearms trafficking course. So last year's budget, as of March twenty-three, the municipal budget was used eighty-six point eight percent of its funding. And then drivers on the budget was the overtime. Uh, guarding fees, fuel on in the vehicles as well as repairs on the. So going into this year, so we're two months into. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I've got the mayor of all, Counselor Taylor.
I'm unclear what this means. This means that the municipal budget was not enough to cover what you did except with this.
It is eighty-six point eight percent.
Oh, and then the municipal budget was more than enough.
More than appreciate the suggestion.
Thank you.
So this is the new performance plan for this year going forward. So we've kept with the same, uh, priorities, which is decrease. Collisions, but we're focusing on injury through enforcement, education, J F Os, which is joint force operations, as well as the traffic working group. Uh, we're going to decrease property crimes, your search warrants, political defenders, warrant statements and hotspot patrols. And we're going to maintain a positive relationship with the community and the county. Through coffee with a cop, community events and engagement, patrols in the yellowhead county. And in key, increase patrols via foot patrols, bike patrols, bording and silo side. My training goal for this year, I'm going to be having, having numbers trained in bike course, eighteen B, the snowmobile course. Uh, golden triangle, which is a sudden death scene training. Uh, I will be offering these are training here at the detachment as well as. A N Q, which is our annual firearms qualification and far line research. Block training, sending members to Regina for block training, as well as D R E training, which remember just finished. Any questions?
Counsel, questions? Counselor Ray.
I think we have a seventy-three percent increase in, um, mental health acts. Do I go back there? Just go back here.
So last year, top files was under. We're about halfway down with the mental health. Definitely been a increase in mental health. Uh, calls for service. Even in the last couple of months, there's a number of factors that drive that. Uh, as I said before, we have a R P A member here, which is a rural P A member. She is posted out of Hinton. She is funded through the province, but she serves. Eight different detachments. But because she is here, she is spreading her knowledge to us and therefore. Uh, educating the members on. Which files we need to take somebody to the hospital, which files we can deal with while they're at their residence. She also does quite a bit of follow-up, um, on these files and therefore that also will generate mental health calls. Because sometimes she notices something that we didn't. So we found that to be, uh, increase as well as we have an array of vaccines in the last couple of months, which has driven up the mental health calls. It was just, I, I believe there's a lot going on in the sense of. Awareness, knowledge, education. And I've been meeting with the hospital on a regular basis. So on that last, the one where we said that top files, so the hospital will accept. We call them form ten patients, which is where we can go and assess, and we determine whether the person needs to go to the hospital. Who does not want to go to the hospital, but I have, uh, with the hospital. Basically an agreement that I will take them there unless they're violent or they're a risk. In escaping, then we take them to Edmonton. Another one is also, we are educating families on form eights, which is where they would go to the courthouse and get a form eight for their loved ones. And then they would bring it to us and then we would transport them to Edmonton. All that takes a lot of time and unfortunately comes out of our budget. So then we are at the hospital with them until they are accepted by the hospital. Definitely a strain on manpower, so that is why the hospital is agreeing to take our form tens. But we, I guess, I, I use the word, we play nice in the sandbox. If we don't believe it to be a good fit for our hospital, then we try to put them. And then we're down. Those, um, costs, or if it's a safety concern, if we don't have nothing others on shift, then I'll cost somebody on overtime to try to put them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Levar.
Um, so page seventeen or sixteen, we're not happy, but it's page twelve thirteen, we have mentioned that. Then I want to make sure I understand. So the revised plan at Q three with the seventy percent, um, applied sort of three point eight. And then the twenty twenty-three financial plan at three point five. So there's a sort of a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar savings and it can't be taxed with that saying in this next upcoming year.
Due to the change of manpower, is that correct?
I don't know, sort of locations. So it's, it's twelve thirteen in the information or page seventeen. Sixty-two and we have that.
So these records come from the people that came with me from Edmonton. I'm not going to, uh, profess to know everything that they know in regards to finance.
But the two point eight million, I guess, at the bottom of the middle column there. That's what we spent this year and the two point five seven fives, what we expect. To spend next year, is that correct?
Yes, that's the way it reads.
Alright. Thank you.
Could you, could you say that again, please?
Absolutely. So the revised plan at Q four is what we spent up till April last year. And the twenty twenty-three financial plans will be expected to spend next year. So we're going to spend two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less than we did. In the previous year.
And that would be mostly from the, uh, decrease in members.
Right.
The two point seven was what?
Two point eight and there's two, two point five seven five.
And there's a first call.
That's what we've spent up till the day of this report.
Counselor, pardon me, C A O, ask.
Being as this was the quarter four report that two point seven was the, uh, total steps for last year, or the last, um. April to year.
I believe that's where I got the eighty-six point eight. Percent of the funding.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, uh, Counselor Taylor.
I agree with this question now, because I understand that you, uh, or your, our, can he approve the operator sites in town? The twenty or so lot of operator sites. Concerned for at least is that some of those operator sites are in the speed transition zones. Is that true or not? But you approve.
Chief.
Yeah. Actually, uh, please, my name, uh, to me, uh, all of me. Uh, those zones are reviewed on an annual basis by both the contractor and myself. And they're approved and the transition zone. It's a lot of misconception about what a transition zone is. A transition zone is when decelerating. Into going from a higher speed to a lower speed. So if you, for example, if you have a sign that says sixty ahead, that's the beginning of the transition zone. When even the sixty sign, that's the expected speed that we would be doing. So that transition zone is going to decelerate. There is no such thing as, at, uh, transition zone when you're accelerating. Okay, all of the zones where the. Contractors doing, uh, traffic important and not in transition zones.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, counsel. Any further questions, Counselor Taylor?
I read for your package that the one camp we got in the ball took six months to get, uh, rid of. That seems like a long timeframe. So desirable timeframe, is there something, um? But it seemed like you explained why, 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 for next time, what's going to happen or something?
So recently, I've drawn a map of where the King's land is versus town land. Uh, town land, we can deal with very differently. Bylaw, it will act as an agent in those situations and is able to say who is allowed on what land. That was King's land, which means it has to go through the conservation officers and lands unit, who then needs a. Order from the magistrate of somebody. Ministry of. So they have to go to court and then have you to document that sign in order to serve the people that are on the land. Who remove themselves from the land, who then they just need to move over and start all over again. So in that regard, very difficult because. It, it did come to us. We then put it on the conservation officers to deal with it. It did not get done. Do I believe that something should have been done more on our part? I believe we could have because. As soon as we were made aware of it, we dealt with it in an R C P. Fashion, we found out there's still power from the, the power or the. There's a sign there, there's stealing powers, we charged them for stealing power. We then went after the conservation and lens to have that cleaned up because it's not town property. And I've asked for weekly updates on when that will get cleaned up. Um, I understand that none of us want that there. We have a golf course, we have. Um, very important people, we have. Unity that see that garbage, we don't want that there. So I really drove that home and actually I was there today and I confirmed that it's completely cleaned up now. So I, I don't want to place blame, but I'm placing blame to this king of money. This is a very long process to get people removed from this land, and because we live very close to King's land. We will continue to have to deal with this.
I wasn't in any way blaming you.
I know. I just, I feel like we could have probably pushed the envelope a little bit.
What, what, what I think, what I'm thinking is that, uh, is there a role for this council? If we see a disjointed provincial process. To, uh, make some sort of process, make some sort of recommendation that provincial government had documented. And then send that in, is a, is an opportunity for us. We can send that into the minister or whoever, and then we send our.
I have been.
distinguished mayor and you talk to that minister and say, here's a problem, we have you, uh, horrible process here or something.
Uh, please go ahead, Staff Sergeant.
I have been in contact with the C A O in coming up with a number of different ideas. And I really felt a bit caught in a hard spot because I'm kind of trying to drive the provincial government to go and clean that up, but I kind of worked with the town to say. So we came up with a number of ideas, maybe the town cleans up and we build the provincial government like. Oh, we didn't know. So I took the, I took the other route and I said, I'm going to be emailing you every two days until that's cleaned up and it's cleaned up. So I think. I'm not sure what the easy answer is there, but I believe we're going to keep running into this. Because there is a number of town land around. Our community. And this is going to continue to happen.
Thank you. Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. You use the word key. It's not the same as brown.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none. Staff Sergeant, thank you for coming out and presenting to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, it is five thirty. We still have three, uh, action items. Uh, are we good to carry on? Do we need a brief trial break?
Will be, please.
Thank you very much. Counsel, we will call a seven, seven minute break, uh, and we will recommence at five thirty-three. Thank you very much. And we will call our committee of the whole meeting for June thirteenth back to order at five thirty-three P M. And we were, we are currently moving on to action item five point, or pardon me, reports. Item five point two, financial report, January through April from this Hinton, uh, and I will turn it over to administration.
Thank you, committee. Um, before you, the report for around period January to April. A number of, uh. Comments have been included on the tax month. One, to kind of give converter information as far as why some of the numbers may be. A little different than anticipated. Uh, currently our taxation is showing as a hundred percent in, but after our new data, we're clearly about to move. These financial reports, council will be the amount remaining outstanding or uncollected at that time. Showing the efforts to ensure that, uh, we have full collection or attempt to help with collection by the end of the year. Uh, and with that, are there any questions from the committee?
Counsel. Any questions and or directions? Counselor Stasher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, there's no questions for committee. I would, I would, the committee accept the financial report as information.
Thank you very much. Counsel. Any questions or discussion on that recommended action? Seeing none. Then we will call to question that committee accept the financial report as information. If you could vote electronically, no. Counselors. Race and Taylor, are you getting the? Nope. Then if we could have you vote, uh. Are you in favor? Please indicate. Very well, uh, any of, any counselors opposed, just for clarification, seeing none, and that is carried unanimously six to none. Thank you very much. Counsel, any further discussion on that? Yeah, counsel, I mean, I don't know, it may help if you log back, uh, or close that window and reopen. The agenda window sometimes that we've found that that's helped. We'll give you a second. And we will move on to section five point three, strategic projects team, council priorities, twenty twenty-three discovery. Uh, administration.
Uh, through the chair, I will refer this one to Winston and Danny.
Good evening, committee. Thank you for having us. Though it's remote this evening for circumstances, you may well understand and appreciate hopefully. Um, so what we wanted to do here this evening was to just share with you the extract of the scope of work. That the strategic team has been tasked to do through the tactical plan. And so what I want to do right now, not to get into the meat and potatoes, would be happy to answer questions. Once we've walked you through. Once we've walked you through this, if we could just get onto the screen, the tactical plan that was shared in your package as well, council. Uh, committee, and then we can just basically set the tone and then we'll walk you through a bunch of items. So this would be familiar to you, committee. Um, as I said, this is an extract of the master tactical plan. Of which, if you go to, just very briefly, if you look at the department responsible. You will see often it's a tag team, whether it be the C A O's office or whether it be another directorate within the municipality. And so basically what you see in front of you, uh, one point one to start off with. Uh, we've basically taken the lead. Uh, P M O stands for project management office, so that's us. Though we, we are viewed as strategic projects in terms of how, uh, sits on the org chart right now. Um, so just to walk you through this very briefly. The idea is not to get into every piece of detail here, just to highlight the topic. The town develops a clear understanding. Of the barriers to development and works to remove the, the barriers. And one of those were to conduct a workshop. And that has been achieved. Um, then second to that, you know, we look at acquisition of. Expand to expand our commercial industrial lands for economic opportunities. And the town works to attract development to vacant land, and then of course the town continues, uh, to work towards full development of town lands. Um, we utilize an expression of interest, um, for other strategies to attract investments. Now, I, I'm not gonna go through the rest up till four point three. What I'm trying to illustrate here is that this is what was unpacked for us. If you look at it, line for line, it looks like, um, there's not much to this. But if we switch to the next, uh, sort of roadmap that Debbie and I have created. This will show you how we're tracking. Um, so I'd before hand it over to Debbie, I just wanna share with the committee that. What you're seeing here is like the one point one is exactly the same one point one that I referred to on the tactical plan. What we did was, is that we, we basically gave ourselves a stretch target that is achievable by calling this a roadmap. Now, this document can become quite large, and that's why it wasn't in your package committee, but we wanted to just show you. How we try and keep ourselves on track, what I started, what's in the making and as well as what is. You know, make, having falling behind perhaps. And then finally, Debbie will show you right to the bottom of the document she gets there. Is there are emerging items that we keep an open mind for? That could come from council, that could come from the C A O's office. What may be a combination of all the departments, C A O and council. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Debbie. To walk you through what we've achieved and what these pink and yellow and purple blocks mean. Debbie, up with you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Russo. Uh, so in front of you, counsel, as Mr. Russo said, is a strategic projects roadmap. And so this is our living document to keep us on track, to allow us to identify. Uh, milestones, uh, key action items to meet the objectives of the tactical plan that support this.
You're breaking up, Deb.
I'm not even moving.
She's frozen now, yeah. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I, I can hear you. Uh, she's frozen right now. Um, okay, so while we wait for her to come back. Um, I'll just keep walking you through this. So basically, just to interpret the document before you right now. The purple block that would show a percentage completion. Um, the block to the, to the left of that would show an actual start. And I think Debbie will come back, she's just rebooting herself. Um, so that's why we've lost her there for a moment and I've lost the chart as well, so. I don't have the chart memorized.
Winston, uh, Debbie just texted me, they just had a major power outage, she's gonna log back in.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. So, counsel, while we wait for that to go, come back committee, is that the purpose of the, what we're trying to show you here this evening is to. Show you the progress we've made, but also really what are we working on, since this is a sort of. You know, a different type of department that you typically used to understanding when sometimes you. You're often here about the water and sewer, we're working on all the things that would eventually feed into that. So we wanted to give you an opportunity, it's been, well, on the calendar, six months now that we've been added, even though it's not been a full six months. That we had dedicated, um, sort of focus on that. However, um, we are pleased to say that, um, from our end, there's been. Progress, then there's been some areas that we are waiting for information, especially with the recent elections. Um, the province, uh, did not really reach out to talk to us, they were kind of on a, and. No service, if I may put it that way, approach until the elections were done, so that held us back a little bit, but that helped us to focus on other things. And so that's really why we're before you tonight, but if you want to ask me any questions right now, while we. Wait to get back into that document that Debbie started showing, I'd be happy to answer that, just to make the best use of our time.
Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I just, uh, I'm kind of wondering, um, or a who's in charge kind of question. So when it comes to exploring opportunities for partnerships or. Uh, capitalizing on economic development opportunities, uh. You have the authority to make agreements with developers? Like we hired you as a director, or do you have to double check with somebody and, uh, each team?
Through to the chair too, Counselor Taylor. Um, when it comes down to pursuing opportunities. Um, we would go out and look at it as a, is it a fit for the town? So if somebody calls us up and say, we'd like to develop A B C. Um, opportunity with you, we would then sit down with the parties. Uh, we would save all this matter to it. We will then escalate that to the C A O to say, you know what, this is something noteworthy for council to, to hear. And here's our suggestion, recommendations. So at that point, there's no commitment that neither the C A O or this little team has made. So we collect most of the information, we put a package together, and we put our suggested, um, go forward path together. Where, uh, did the decisions come in is where servicing, um, development agreement, that's where it starts to. Um, weight itself into another department where we give input. But that is not ours to, to sign off on because we are not that department in terms of. The situation, we then hand that over to that directorate with our support in the background. So it's almost like we are the people that bring the opportunity. We make sure it's a fit for the town, we ensure it makes financial sense, and then it's just tidying up the paperwork.
Counselor Taylor.
Okay, so you don't have the authority to make agreements with developers?
Um, no, that would reside with a directorate that, um. Is responsible, that is going to manage that development agreement stem to stem. We don't give input, we give our strong recommendations, but it's up to the department that. Is responsible for whatever the matter may be, be it planning and development, be it community services. That's where it would reside, or even finance.
Great.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Uh, uh, Ms. Weber, you're back. Did you wanna carry on? Are you able to carry on with your presentation? Of the, uh, report that was on the screen?
I guess, uh, thank you, committee, for your understanding. We're having a major thunderstorm and we had a big bump there, so, uh. I am back though and I'm, uh, prepared to question again. Okay, you should hopefully see the strategic project roadmap in front of you once again, counsel and committee, thank you for your patience. Uh, so as Mr. Russo was saying before I left the conversation, um, just to give you an idea. How this is set up, so along the left-hand side, you'll see the one point one, understanding of barriers to development. I abbreviated that slightly, but it is coming from the strategic plan. And then the items in gray underneath it are the tactical plan. Uh, objectives to meet the strategic goal there. So, uh, these are taken right out of the strategic plan. And, or the tactical plan, my apologies. And with that, um, underneath those are. Specific items that Mr. Russo and I have identified as action items or milestones that need to be carried out. To meet the goals of the objective and the strategy from, from committee and council. So these are our, uh, notes under here, things that we need to do in the timelines we set. Um, in the rest of it, you'll see where these gray lines are for these tactical plans. We took, I took. Uh, right from the tactical plan, the planning horizon that was stated then that, that, uh, council has approved. And so that's the, uh, planning timelines that we're working with at present, until such time that that, that document is revised. Uh, what you'll see here as we go along the top of this chart. Is, uh, first of all, this month, so this is, we're in the sixth month of the year. This just gives us a really quick guide to go down the spreadsheet and identify where we're at in time. In terms of all of these projects, what's done, what's not done, what's coming up. So this is just a slider for us. Um, this is, uh, the, along the top, we've split it into year and the quarter. And then the month is also broken down just to, again, help us with those timelines as we move things back and forth. The colors of note, uh, not to get too detailed, as Mr. Russo had alluded to before, was that. This plan duration, this gray cross hatching is really the, the, the item that we're using to help us stay. Uh, on top of things to keep progressing and understand how things are flowing with others. So, for instance, just to use this as an example. Uh, the workshop that we did with, uh, contractors was one of the mechanisms we felt was important for identifying barriers. Uh, in reducing red tape, uh, working with the municipality. And under that. Um, what we heard from the contractor workshop is one of those things where we, we gave ourselves May. To the end of November to sort of pull together what that document looks like, what we heard. But we've already achieved that, so it's got a different color on it. Um, but it's important as we slide through these, just generally, to understand for committee that. That we're planning these things as we go and charting it out so that we've got a very clear path forward for ourselves. And to share with council as well and the C A O. Um, the other color that's important is this dark kind of a plum, I'm not sure what color it shows up on the screen for you. But this dark color here shows our progress, our percent progress and what's complete. So these items here state that we're complete. So for instance, for the contractor workshop, that is now complete one hundred percent, so it shows it all. Completely filled in. When you're seeing this color, this orangey color that says percent complete beyond the plan, that means we either accomplished it. Just after we had planned to or before it. Uh, but it just means outside that timeline that we anticipated. So again, if I use the example of. The document of what we heard from the contractor workshop, that's already complete and it's outside the planning timeframe. So it's just a, it's really just a good chart for us to keep moving forward. And we will keep moving, uh, different targets for different elements of our strategic plan within this. We will keep this as a living document, we have been adding to it as we start to flesh out the details and steps we understand we need to take. To achieve the goals of council through the tactical and the strategic plan. So this is our living document. Um, at any time, it's just a snapshot of kind of where we're at. Are there any ca- uh, questions at this time from the committee, uh, in terms of how to sort of look at this, this. Form, or should I continue to go through the elements of it, sort of one at a time, but at a high level?
What's left any questions before it then carries on? Not seeing any, please carry on.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the next item that falls into this understanding of barriers to development. Was identified by council as the annual developer workshop, that was one of the tactical plan items. And, um, it shows up that we completed it just after, uh, because it fell into the following month. But again, uh, the developer workshop in an essence of itself is complete. Uh, we've got a few things that have come out of it though, that were, that were wonderful from the. The conversation that happened that evening with developers and realtors and, and other stakeholders that were at the table. So we're following up on some of those, uh, kind of, uh, give you an idea would be, um. The realtors were asking for some kind of a package, so if we know that they've got properties that they commonly get questions for. Uh, we wanna be able to provide as much information about that property, not just the zoning and what they could do, but maybe if it could be rezoned, what. Would the town be considering for rezoning, uh, to give some options if there's an investor interested? So those were some of the key things that came out of the developer workshop that, um, Mr. Russo and I are still working through. Uh, closely with P and D, uh, to, to identify and create those little packages, what would that be and how do we provide that information to them? So those are follow-up items on our list. Uh, town explores land acquisition opportunities, so that was the strategic goal. Underneath there, we've got, um, established relationships with Yellowhead County, the province, to pursue annex opportunities, annexes opportunities. So we have had a kickoff meeting with Yellowhead County, uh, planning manager, which was a wonderful meeting, it was a great relationship starter. Uh, they're open to conversations, and so we just documented that we've had that initial conversation with them about collaborating. On our boundaries with the county to see what their future plans are and, uh, working together to that end. Um, you'll see a couple elements on here that continue to say retreat with council or workshop with council for further. Uh, clarification on some of these items. Again, just to focus on the fact that we do have these things in the queue and they are planned out. Uh, Mr. Russo, I'll be revising those plans as we move forward. Um, uh, developable land and land inventory, those are things that are definitely on the, on the scope. We've been working with planning and development a little bit on that, I've been doing some mapping. Uh, trying to just determine what, what that looks like, is it highway sixteen corridor, is it? Um, a, a combination of different kinds of private land that the town has for sale, is it townal lands, crown lands, what does that look like? And we've been starting to work on that, so you can see that in here that we've got, you know, some work done on it and we started ahead of time for that. And we'll continue to move forward, uh, pursuing opportunities for crown land. Um, we've determined some of the basic steps for the application, we still have yet to reach out and, and get some specifics on that. Once we have a better idea from committee and council, what those goals really are. Uh, ground field and infill strategies, this is a good one to bring up because. It, in the tactical plan, it doesn't actually occur, so I apologize, my screen's not split for you to follow along. Um, this one isn't identified until start, to start until Q two of twenty twenty-four. But with a lot of the other overlap of, of land, uh, development. Items that are in the tactical and strategic plan, we're starting to work on these things already. So it's, it's good for us to just have that in front of us and we just keep moving forward and, and can ship our progress. Um, again, uh, let me just scroll down. We ten lands, uh, you know, we've, we've met with you folks to talk about. Uh, the demographic of focus, uh, when we were determining whether it was a go or no go to apply for the next affordable housing grant. And we decided that wasn't where we wanted to go. And again, this is something for our workshop with council, so we'll be going through that to talk about what are those other options? Um, at the very bottom, I don't wanna get into too many of the details, like Mr. Russo said, we didn't really wanna get right into the nuts and bolts of it. Um, was just to, um, talk about these other two categories, these emergent items that Mr. Russo had referred to. So we, we felt it was important, we do spend a fair amount of time with, uh, enough of the turnover of staff and at the senior leadership. Uh, level as well. Um, there is a lot of continuity of information that's required, so we are still in that transition. We do support, um, all the other teams with different items at different levels. And we wanted to make sure we could map that and quantify that, and we'll, we'll put some more dropdowns in this category. Of ongoing internal department, but you know, that's our role as, as a strategic project team is to make sure that we're there to help. And facilitate all the other departments and, and for them to facilitate us as well. And so it's, it's a, it's really important for us to recognize the time allocation. For this and, uh, the importance of making sure that we're all working as a cohesive team, and so we put it in the chart. Uh, the next one is the emergent strategic priorities. And we, uh, wanted to have, uh, some basic stuff in here for this for now, we will flush this out in more, more detail, but. We don't wanna leave sight of the two big developments that we've got, you know, on our doorstep, Partriple Nine actively working on their development. And some of the time commitment and things that we might be doing to support Partriple Nine's development at the golf course. Uh, Novus Earth, of course, uh, we're, we're maintaining our municipal engagement with, with, uh, Novus Earth to determine what they. What they're doing, where they're at in their development, and how we can help them, uh, as a municipality, or if we can, or how else we might be able to support that. What they're doing, where they're at in their development and how we can help them uh, as a municipality, or if we can, or how else we might be able to support that. Um, ongoing engagement with developers. So since uh, we uh, developed this team. We have had bi-weekly meetings with local developers to talk about. What are they hearing in the community? What's on the ground? What's, what's going on and, and what? Are things that the developer realtor community are really looking at as a focus for the community? Could be small businesses as well. Um, but ongoing engagement, uh, just to keep a, a local. Um, understanding of, of, of important things for the community. Now, when it comes to the water management, waste management, although it's not in our purview to be. Looking at these holistically, uh, we will be working with infrastructure and corporate services and the C A O, of course. To talk about different things to do with water management. So while our team is tasked with sorting out the water treatment plant, for instance. Um, other teams are tasked with a water meter strategy and working on a new water by law. And so. As a strategic team, we felt it was important to, to put in there. That we're kind of looking at a high level, strategic level of what have other communities done? What are other municipalities doing that's successful or not? What have been their stumbling blocks? Um, and what are some of their best practices so that we can advise from that perspective and provide input as we develop those things through the. Waste management is another one, um, you know, reaching out to contacts in other communities about what their successes are and what their challenges are. So we just wanted to make sure that we were tracking some of those emergent. Emergent priorities as well as we, as we discover them. You don't have anything else on this at this particular time committee unless there are questions about specific items that you would like to discuss? Or anything else that you might want to ask?
Counsel, any questions on any of those items? Seeing none, no, we are good on that, Ms. Weber.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anything else, uh? Before I just double check one more time with uh, counsel? Mr. Russo?
Yep, through to the chair to committee. The, the purpose of tonight was simply to show committee. That what we're tracking, what we pro- what our progress is. And that we have a tool that we seeking to track what we do. So it's all measurable at the end of the day. So if anyone wants to ask, what are you doing? Where are we at? We are able to show this tool. Of course, the tool that Debbie was talking about a moment ago. We don't um, you know, advertise it because that is an internal mechanism for us to track ourselves. And so we just wanted to share with council, with the committee that. And we would wanted to, if there was any questions to us, this was all to give you a update. And more to come as we move forward into the work, upcoming workshop with council or retreat. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Counsel, any final questions before we move on? Seeing none, then we will move on to item five point four, uh, physician recruitment and retention. And I will turn it over to administration.
Thank you, Chair, to the rest of the committees. So we have this uh, report in terms of your. Against gauge in these interest in pursuing the short-term emergence. Uh, request that has been put forward by Dr. Beamish. And, and or to look at this from more of a long-term coordinated. Uh, approach and where we want to. Position ourselves in this space and how, how much involvement do we want to have in municipality? In healthcare specifically related to the position, physician or healthcare recruitment and retention. So we do have a specific request. From um, from one of the local physicians. For the municipality to cover the travel costs or buy unfunded local shifts. There are two that are covered through the Alberta Medical Association. Uh, the, the issue being that they're having a difficult time funding all of the local shifts. Because if the doctors are not being compensated for their travel, there are many other communities. Depending on their shortage of doctors there where they will get their travel covered by the Alberta Medical Association. Unfortunately, according to the ratios that Alberta Medical Association uses. We, we have too many doctors to apply for further programs for local travel coverage. So. Uh, with that being said, uh, the recommended actions that we refer this matter to the, into healthcare foundation. If council is looking at solving the short-term or emergent issue of. A shortage of doctors in our emergency room for the summer months being June, July and August. Uh, this recommended action in isolation probably isn't appropriate because by the time we go to. Uh. Into healthcare foundation, uh, then we come back, we bring it back to committee, those council, it will be a long time. And the request was for June, July and August, uh, we're already. Uh. Into it a little bit, but um, that's all I have at this time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, uh, C A O. I have myself and counselor Taylor. Uh, my question comes from page two of the report under source of funds. Uh, it identifies uh, that it could come from the operating budget, transfers to local boards and agencies. Um, specifically, do we know what the existing, um? What the status of that existing account is? If it was the will of council to allocate reserve, uh, funding from that, that particular item?
So, uh, through the chair to members of council, I believe that we have. A hundred and eighty remaining in that account. Um. So we, we are reconciling all of the different uh, items that we have. But when we come to the conclusion that there'll be. Uh. More than that, what enough uh, to fund. This requested in its entirety, if that was checked out. It's not. Probably isn't the best line item, but we can cover it through our existing operational pledges. But we do not have any specific line items for this type of uh, request, just because it is. It is a different request. We didn't think that it fit well within any of our other existing programs. So. It is coming forward as an urgent item, but we can cover it through our existing operational pledge.
Thank you. I have further questions, but I'll go to counselor Taylor and put myself back in queue.
Um, I did talk to the president of the Hinton Healthcare Foundation. He indicated they can jump on this and get back in us relatively. You discussed and the dialogue response. Uh, yes, through uh, the chair to councillor Stewart, uh. Yes, the Hinton Healthcare Foundation is willing to meet. Um, quickly, uh, but depending on that meeting, the development of people say. Options on how we want to do this, uh, may take a little bit of time. Bringing it back to council may take a little bit of time. Um. In honoring their request that's been put forward, the clock is ticking in weeks or uh. Uh, weeks that they matter here if. Council wants to honor their request to cover off local shifts in the short term. So. We can certainly look at that as one of the long-term options. We certainly be ready for July, but you know, it would just, it would delay the process. In uh. At a time where the request was for June, we're already well into June by the time this actually goes to council. You know, we're, we're getting away at that timeline, but we certainly can. And uh, the, the chair of the foundation. Uh. Did indicate that they're, they're certainly willing to, to discuss options. Uh, they're willing to discuss options and they can meet with us and then look forward to those meetings.
Counselor Taylor, does that answer your question?
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, I have myself next. My question centers around the recommended action. Uh, so the recommended action was that committee refer this matter. Uh, to the Hinton Healthcare Foundation. For myself. Barring, of course, a, a recommendation from council, I. I'd hope to see a little bit of action from council on this specifically. The reason for the recommended action, is it because, I mean, just plain and simply, this is outside the normal purview of. The municipality in terms of what we tend to do versus what the province tends to do?
Yeah, so through the chair, it's a good question. And this is one I. I wrestled with, you know, I think that the, I think the request is valid. Uh. I don't have anything to quantify this in any. Specific way other than what we've been uh, told by the physicians, they, you know. It is, it, there can be some difficulties because the doctors are private contractors. And we are being as a talent to pay travel costs by private contractors. It's outside of our legislative obligations. It's certainly included if council wants it to be. Within our political mandates in order to do something like this. Uh. But uh, to be perfectly honest, I, I struggled with recommending an, an action on this. Um, but from just an administrative perspective. Uh, you know, looking at this from a long-term and not a knee-jerk reaction, I thought was more appropriate than recommending. Uh. Uh, doing the, or honoring the request at this time, but I'm, I'm all into whatever council wishes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor and councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, CEO Fanatic, I heard you say that you, you saw some merit and you said, uh. That is a valid request from the physicians. Uh, just to confirm, other municipalities have compensated for travel and lodging for locals, uh. In Alberta?
Uh, through the chair to the rest of the committee, I'm not aware of specifically, um. Funding for travel for locals, but I, I can tell you that across the province, uh, a lot of municipalities. Do some kind of financial incentives for physicians and that could be. Uh, rent subsidies, that could be, you know, some and one as far as. Purchasing a house where they allow the doctors to stay, you know, there's, there's a huge variety, but it's not. Uncommon for a municipality to be. Uh, providing financial incentives.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Taylor, then myself.
Um. I guess I'm okay. I don't, I don't understand the objective. We give out money. This will keep our emergency room open. What's the objective of giving this one? Please, through the chair, the, the objective is to keep it open. Um, this will be the emergency room. That is the intent of a program. Now, we're not in control of who takes which, uh, local shifts. But it is certainly an incentive for locals to come here to cover those shifts with the whole, I didn't mean keep their emergency room open for, for the summer.
Any follow-up, councillor Taylor? Are you good?
Um, I have a separate question, but I'll wait.
Okay, I'll put you in queue. Uh, for myself, I, not so much a question as I really, I just want to extend my appreciation to councillor Race. Uh, when we were at F C M, one of the things I know councillor Race did and. This easier when I call the extent, thanks than sort of brag, but I think it's brag. Uh, is that she met with other communities who were experiencing shortages with their doctors and. And asked around to find out how they're dealing with these sorts of situations. Uh, and I know she dedicated a good deal of time to that. So thank you, councillor Race. That's an important part of this conversation. Uh, councillor Taylor and then the mayor.
Yeah, I didn't understand the issue with the urgency here. Uh, for June. But the Hinton Healthcare Foundation representatives, I suppose, two of them. Indicated that they did have some money for this or July and August. So. We want to help out in uh, June, so be it. But uh, they, 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 they have, they have money in this. It seems a bit more in their mandate than it does in our mandate. It might get us working together with them. At least on the short-term goal, getting the. E R open for keeping the E R open for the summer. And they would be able to give us some better input because they're into that, uh, as well. Like, like, this is going to keep the E R.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Mr. Mayor and councillor Race.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question for administration for, I provide direction. Um. We could. Put forward, uh, option one and two separately. One, uh, is to. Uh, deal with maybe more of an imminent cost, uh, and also provide a separate direction to also look. To deal with the healthcare foundation for maybe knowing the long-term care solution.
Through the.
Yes, absolutely. Um, with, along with the recommended action, the other thing that I would.
I would request, i- if that is the desire of the committee, would probably be to appoint a few councillors to attend because it is. The, you know, board representatives that we would be meeting with that. And that, uh. I would seek committee to appoint a few to, uh, to attend those meetings.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, Mr. Charlie, for the direction. That committee refer the request for local travel cost coverage to the next, the meeting of council. And to also refer this matter to the Hinton Healthcare Foundation. Here. And if I may speak to it, please, the reason I'm combining those is, uh, if somebody wants to split it, we can easily split it if, uh. You're unsure, wanted it to me, they go in and in, at least for what I would like to do, I would like to see this at council meeting, uh. Next week. Um, I, I, I don't know if I support the ten thousand five hundred, but I would support. Perhaps, you know, in eight weeks or six week, while we bridge that, uh. Relationship with the healthcare foundation. We can discuss that next Tuesday. So that's why I'd like to see it for, uh, council chambers. Uh, to at least look at those financial opportunities that we can assist in the short term, but to also, um. Uh, in conjunction towards the healthcare foundation as this is not only a short-term solution that's needed. So. Uh, I'll keep it together, at least for the time being, uh, and that's, uh, why I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I had councillor Race and then councillor Taylor in the main queue. Counselors, would you like to stay in the main queue? No? Okay. Uh, councillor Race, you want to stay in the main queue? Sure. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and then I'll go to councillor Levar, who had indicated he'd like to speak after this direction.
Um. I think I'm in support of motion because we, we need to come up with a holistic plan. I mean. We're going to just throw money at things that come out to recur. I think that's the wrong strategy and maybe it's time to sit down now and have a, a more holistic discussion about. This. Topic which. I mean, it's impacting not only every Canadian community, but when I was, I was in the U S, there are guys saying John is down there. And so I think we need a, a more, uh, focused plan.
Thank you, councillor Levar. Councillor Taylor.
I totally agree with you. I just, I don't think that motion does it. This motion talks about keeping the E R the summer. I think once we finish with this discussion. We have to look at like, uh, motion number three, which is a more long-term point. Uh, how, look at alternatives for the long-term, how we can look at, uh, and working smarter and working well. At options and how that's going to be and get administration to look at some of those options, be it working with the Hinton Foundation to look at the long-term. This is a short-term, I didn't figure this, this is good in the short-term. But I kind of think we need to go with, uh. Um, option number three here as well, and that's to get administration, uh, bringing back a report and alternative supporting attraction and retention. Whether that be a committee, whether that be working with the Hinton Foundation, whether that is councillors. They're very smart people on the Hinton Foundation. I think that's a pretty good idea. So. I think we need to come back to option three. This is a short-term. This is just keeping the E R open for the summer.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Counsel, uh, any other discussion along the direction on the thing? Seeing none? Oh, councillor Race.
You know, sir, I will support this. I just got to say, you know what, you guys, um, we, I, I'm not taking this lightly at all. June, July, August, we are taking care of the citizens of Hinton. People who travel, I mean, sixteen, if these fires continue, we're taking care of them. They don't have a hospital right now. So, you know, anybody gets hurt, they're coming in our emergency department. Um. You know, this is, this is big and skin term. And another thing is I want our physicians to impress, to know a decision that we're making, we're making. Um, to help them out there. Very exhausting. Exhausting. So, um, and the taxpayer money that would be used could not be better served than what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Race. Counsel, any further discussion on that before I call this your question? Councillor Taylor?
Just like you say, my, my expectation is that I hope for this, that we will be somehow, I hope, sharing this with the Hinton Foundation and having discussions to, uh. Do that coming up. Is that correct?
Administration, uh, through the chair members' calendar. Yeah, I think. I, I think along with this, I think we're looking at how we can partner with the Hinton Health, or the Hinton Foundation. Tune to different ways, not sharing certainly on the topics that will be discussed.
Yeah, I'm referring to not sharing on the keeping the ER open for the summer, which is what this is for, that's a relief.
Council.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just by clarifying, just to councillor Taylor's point. My understanding is that may or may not be the case for the twentieth of June. That if there is there certainly information being now in the twentieth from the healthcare foundation. That can impact the monetary decision we must make and the council chamber, then great, I would love that. But there may be, that may not be present for us in a week where I would expect financial options for us. Besides the council to maybe bridge that gap and then also broker arrangements to cost share and so just to not. Give you false expectations that next week we may be committing X amount of money for just us regardless of a. A a deal with the healthcare foundation if they have not. Brought back information to us regarding, just let me clarify, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, any further discussion before we call to question? Seeing none, uh, we are voting on the following, that committee refer the request for local travel costs coverage. To the next meeting of council and to also refer this matter to the Hinton Healthcare Foundation. Council, please vote electronically now. No electronic coming up. Okay, so for councillors, uh, Taylor and Race, if you are in favor, please indicate. Oh, councillor Race, you have it electronically now? Okay, so it's not your honor. And councillor Taylors in favor, council, anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Councillor Taylor.
I'd like to put the motion forward that committee direct administration to bring back a report on alternatives. Supporting the attraction and retention of healthcare professionals, that's a more real and true motion. Um, this is a provincial problem and we're competing with the communities, I think, all over the province on this doctor shortage. So the goal, I think, is to look at it from that point of view and look at how it can work. Smarter, better than other other communities that were kind of incentives or other communities offering. Or those communities who are kind of incentives to not offer in order to attract, if we've never done that before. Maybe we have to do that on the short term. We believe on the long term, the provincial government will solve this problem, but on the short term. Is what what do we have to do, what high level asking for incentives is probably different than what we have to do versus Sunry versus other people. So I think this will at least get the administration looking at how we're gonna do that, I think. Some of those people on the foundation might be important, this some of them have. Recent experience in this area, but I'd need that in administration to figure that out exactly.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Council, any discussion on the direction on the floor? Seeing none, we call to question that committee direct administration. To bring back a report on alternatives for supporting the attraction and retention of healthcare professionals. Sorry, I'll just, one second, are we logged in? That's okay, we'll wait. All right, do you have it electronically councillor Taylor? No? Oh, there it is. There we go. Council, I will call to question one more time that the correct administration. To bring back a report on alternatives for supporting the attraction and retention of healthcare professionals, if you can vote electronically first. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, council, any further discussion, questions or directions on that point?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, uh, just to, let's say, round out the point I made earlier, just because we are meeting with the healthcare foundation. If we would like to appoint a few councillors that would accompany administration to attend. Uh, to meet with councillors present, I think that would be appropriate in this situation.
Just to the point of clarification from the chair, uh, do we, and forgive me if I'm not aware. What is the particular dates on that for the councillors who may be interested through the chair? There's no set dates on. Uh, I mean, yeah, we would have to work out the dates with the. Councillor Taylor.
I'm thinking two things, right? I'm thinking the urgent business of taking care of the ER and how we're gonna fund the ER. If we start organizing joint meetings versus whatever, that's gonna take quite a while. Then there's the more long term approach of looking at alternatives, which is for you to go way of think. About what that alternative is and how we could do do that. I'm wondering if by just jumping all those processes, you can meet two councillors, isn't missing a step or two?
CAO.
So through the chair to the rest of the committee, the way I, the way I. Um, I see this working is the request, the. Uh, the request for local travel coverage, I could be going forward to council at the very next meeting. Regardless of any agreement, but we commit to the dollars we can get even retroactively. You know, commitment to cost share, that I think that's great, but I think we need to assign some dollars so we can get this. This process going quickly. I think my intent is that the more long term solutions would be. Developed in conjunction with the healthcare foundation because this is not. My staff's expertise because, you know, the the pulse of the community and the needs of the healthcare professionals, that's a. That's a tough thing to quantify. I think the Hinton Healthcare Foundation is going to be the best resource in order to do that. But I think when developing those solutions in conjunction with the healthcare foundation, having councillors present to work directly with the. Uh, the officials on that board and council, I think would also be appropriate. So it would almost be an integrated approach coming forward to something that we think would. Uh, it is the best option for the. So the two councils would be two processes, the first one going forward immediately, the second one will take a little bit of time.
Councillor Taylor.
If I could, I'm not opposed to some council involvement, uh, provided we have people on the actual board that. That are intimately familiar with the law, but there has to be some, we say, working horsepower. Because we come up with a solution for this, it's a whole bunch of things we don't have, we don't know and we need to find out, right? So we need to be able to determine where we fit into this scheme, doctors, or just how sure we are for me for everybody else. What are the best practices, for instance, around the product, so we fit into that. And are there impediments in the town and that, that we need to know about that are that are working for or against those. And that needs horsepower from somebody, not just elected officials.
Uh, through the chair, the horsepower will be taken care of by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just want to understand the purpose of the councillors needed to be appointed now for the first part. Like for what kind of meetings and what 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 would be the input or the impact of council?
CAO.
So through the chair, my my intent with that is, uh, because we're working with. Non-profit organization that provides services, you know, we can certainly do that through staff, but. To me, it just, it would provide, I I believe, a lot of value just having councils there, being representatives from council, working with. The, uh, the appointees of the Hinton Healthcare Foundation, we can certainly work with that, that board. Um, but I did not technically elected officials, but I thought it was closely equivalent to. Elected physicians working in collective decisions and having that representation for council, I think would provide some value when working that.
Tell me a follow up, please. I I. I appreciate that intent. I think my preference is to, for the second part. What is more actionable that we appoint, perhaps we create a committee, appoint councillors that has all all has an impact from. Reunification to, uh, responsibility as a board member or a workshop member. For the first part, I'd like to. Maybe not reinvent the wheel or do something differently than in the past. I open it for all the council generally. At the council shows up or less anyway into a point, maybe that's why there is a little bit, I don't know, from everyone. We've always just opened it up. So the point two, just to informally kind of be there. Uh, maybe we're we're changing that process and maybe that's where, at least I'm getting some struggle, uh, to to kind of winning. Only YouTube can go there and listen. So those are just my thoughts, but whatever the little council wants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, CAO, did you want to respond before I go?
I I'm perfectly happy with that process. That's how we've done it in the past and we both ended up the whole of council. I have no, no concerns with that.
I was, I was initially about to say, uh, perhaps we can assign a couple of councillors temporarily. Uh, over over a limited period, let's say a month or so, but in this case, I I think I like the mayor's. Approach a little bit better of just keeping it open and allowing any interest in councillors to attend. Uh, yeah, I think that's more flexible and more in line with what we've done in the past. Councillor Taylor than councillor Levar.
Maybe if I ask a question in a different way, I'm still a little bit unclear as to how this, uh, this motion that we've just made. Both bringing back a report on alternatives for supporting traction or attention of healthcare professionals. Gets into your suggestion of getting two pastors involved, like you already brought back a report and it's the meeting and it's a bunch of pastors. And then healthcare foundation, and we haven't even had a discussion with that in the long term solution, so I guess that's what concerns me.
Through the chair, so please, my 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 plans to do exactly what is identified there and then bring that report forward. Um, but I don't want to do that in isolation of working with people who are involved in healthcare and to me, that's the representatives that represent them. So I think that would just be able to provide insight that an administrative report on options. Cause I I can look around the province, we can find, you know, these communities do this, but there's a, especially with this type of thing. It's very, um. It's the, sometimes the non tangible things that make the big, big difference when you're trying to attract your routine. So my my intent is not to give the responsibility to any committee. My intent is to talk with the Hinton Healthcare Foundation, develop what we believe would work here in Hinton. Uh, and base my report with that as a starting or a go forward basis. Or we can include all the other options that are available, but I think that local knowledge is going to be very important. For this report and for providing adequate information to council on this.
Thank you, CAO. Councillor Levar, send myself and councillor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I think if if we're to move forward with this, any realistic sort of way. Um, having, this is, this is maybe one of the more important committees that we'll deal with in the next. Little while, I mean, this is an urgent issue, it's a big deal. Um, and and to leave it open, uh, and I agree in this initial part, I think that's the best way to deal with it. But to go forward, to actually have a, a, a really progressive look at, you know, what we might do. I think it's important to assign councillors to do that. It's gonna be big jobs, it's gonna take time. But I think we need to sort of build the box around what that looks like, what we're committing to and and how that looks for. But then we can build that structure later. I think that, I think, you know. Uh, we again, because we're talking about there now. Uh, we've met that, but then I do think we need to get a fun committee together.
Thank you councillor Levar. I'm gonna withdraw from the queue councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. So. Uh, I hope I'm not off track there, but the, uh, we're asking for a report, you know, if you can take a look at what's out there. The Inland Healthcare Foundation is maybe just one option. You know, Sunry has said they will come to our town and talk to us. Let us know that they did and how they were successful. Cold Lake will come to our town and talk to us, so. You've got a lot of people doing a lot of good things, uh, successful things. So, um, you know, I don't want to look my day one basket with the foundation, because there's a lot of. And maybe that's not during the calendar.
Through the chair, my intention is to bring forward all, you know, the available watching out there that will absolutely be part of it.
Council, I have nobody in speakers queue. Do we have any further, uh, questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will move into reporting, uh, with six point one, council reports. Uh, and I will start to my right with councillor Levar, please.
Uh, nothing to report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Also, things to report, thank you. Thank you, uh, councillor Taylor. Councillor Race?
Nothing, sir.
Uh, and councillor O'Shannon.
Uh, I do have a couple of things to report, uh, from meetings last week, uh, future's. Last yellowhead meeting last week, uh, a lot of housekeeping, uh, stuff like that. There were a couple items that might be of interest to, uh, the council and the community. Uh, the things, you know, general managers, up at the was. Uh, discussion regarding its ill waiter shortage in the Inland area. Uh, that we might have the trio of business retention and expansion study that the town Hinton supported. And the community futures has come up, some skills and some or some actions and strategies to try and. Help deal with that still labor shortage. Uh, the other thing that, uh. That we undertook at that meeting was a, uh, strategic planning session around, uh, loans. Doing loan policy, loan please, overview of portfolios, stuff like that. So we did make some minor changes to. Community futures, sort of minister laws in the future. Nothing, nothing to read. The other meeting that we had was the, a boardwalk oversight committee meeting. Uh, again, quite a bit of housekeeping, some, uh. One of, one of the, uh, items, just the, uh, they developed a signage subcommittee. So there's going to be development of wayfinding signage that'll be placed in a boardwalk to help visitors find the way. The Inland residents who spent a long time there, it's pretty easy, you know, a way around for visitor. It is actually quite complex and there are people who got got lost. Step there, so the wayfinding side is just gonna turn that. Other thing that might be of interest to council and the community is that that area along with other areas. Are kind of being overrun with thistle in the last few years. So there's going to be a thistle hole in August. It's gonna be advertised and there'll be looking for volunteers to come out and with the, uh. This, I think, we're seeing it in August, people will see, try and help that, uh, they're expanding too much next year. And that's all I've got to report.
Thank you councillor O'Shannon. Uh, CAO.
Uh, through the chair to the rest of the committee, if I wanted anything else to add to my reports on page seven on, if there's any questions about it.
Council, uh, any questions or discussion on the CAO, uh, reports? Councillor Race.
I I just got to say how happy I am to see your reports. They are so detailed, so much information.
Councillor Taylor.
I had a question on one of your updates in the last few hours, if you don't mind. I'm a little unclear on, uh, backup, uh, generation, uh, capacity for, uh, water and water treatment, for example. Because. I'm not a fire expert, one of the things we put out of fires, water. So I would have had all the backup, uh, you know, generation capacity for this. One of your reports on the weekend indicated that we had trouble with that for, at the water plant. But, uh, the bypass station, something that backup generators, case the power fails, so that's already covered.
CAO, so through the, uh, through and the chair to council, we can. Operate in a pinch with a little backup, proper backup generators, um, it is not ideal and it would be. I think some, some supply issues, if that were the case, I think, you know, we'd ensure that we can get by in a pinch. We also have our reservoirs, which is really our normal contingents to plan. We also have our reservoirs, which is really our normal contingents to plan on how we provide water in case of an outage, but. Having those backup generators to make sure that we can properly block at uh. Uh our water treatment facility is is needed in these types of situations, we can look at extended hour.
I mean, I'm I'm just assuming automatically that we would have had that capacity. Uh we don't.
Like I said, you know, our. Staff is often, but this may, this one may be a better uh. Director of infrastructure division.
Later.
Uh okay, so. The reservoirs are located up on the hill, which provides pressure to the town just by their location, so generally the water pressure is. Uh satisfied in the case for power outage, but in case of a longer power outage. Um we were bringing in smaller generators because our SCADA systems went down and we didn't have any ability to. Monitor the system or make adjustments to how it's running, so some of the extra generators were specific, they took out the reservoir. Or for running the SCADA system. Uh and then the larger generator was at the mill site itself, the uh the mill when it's running can. Uh run co-gen, and so it can be some backup, but if the mill isn't running and that. There was no separate generator for the water treatment plant at the mill site in the case where they're not running and. Uh and there's no power outage, so that was where the larger generator was.
Councillor Kim?
I think that explains it for me, like because the bulk mill was down, the bulk mill has power capability, even if there's a big blackout, so uh. Uh and they're they're shut down, so that's why we needed the uh generator that we didn't have.
And then as the shutdown goes. The ones you would be thinking about is like our Artis D reservoir isn't a gravity system, but does have a. Uh a diesel run pump there to to run in the case of the power outage, so some of the facilities have that. But we just found a few holes where we needed to. Some power to keep our SCADA system.
Okay, thanks, I understand.
Councillor Race, if you follow up?
Can we grant them or purchase?
Uh through the chair, you go to.
Council, any further questions on the CAO report? Seeing none, then we will move into uh no information items, so move on to eight, which is closed session. Uh there are four items uh as indicated through our amended agenda, so I am looking for, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, council, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll simply do this uh via show of hands, all those in favor. And we will move into closed session, thank you very much.